How are you guys? Somebody told me how smart you are the other day and I can't remember who was. Yes. Might have been Gail Harris. You know Gail? Might have been her. Yeah. What's that? Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Harris.
Huh?
Yeah, she's pretty amazing.
Sorry, is there any declaration of conflicts for any agenda item for this evening?
No.
No.
No, okay. Um, is anybody have any comments other than what Jamie had already announced or pointed out, excuse me, with our minutes from March nineteenth? Anybody have any corrections or anything? Okay, then we just need an approval on a second.
All move to approve the minutes for March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Uh, so now on to number four, discussion and possible recommendation on legacy B estates. Oh, I love the hat.
All right, you guys can hear me good?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm a firm believer that all things happen for a reason. And the last time we were in here, we had a lot of really good feedback that we needed to go back to the drawing board and correct. Which, we have all the answers for every questions that we're gonna be hopefully re-asked again today. Um, first, just did wanna make a comment about the differences between my mother and I. I'm a Forger Housing and she's Legacy B Estates. So, when I sell a home, that's not necessarily income that she can count for hers, 'cause it's not hers essentially. Um, she's nice enough to be able to provide storage lots or pads into the community that people can rent their spaces from. And then eventually move the homes out or stay there long-term. So it's totally up to them on what they would like to do. We've redesigned a lot of this community. We've done, I've sent pictures in, um, we've customized a couple floor plans that fit into the community. And there's been a lot of changes as far as CCNRs go. We now have CCNRs in place. Um, we spent, I know I only sent them to you guys yesterday, but that's because it took me and, uh, people that were helping me over just under two weeks to get these completely done. And they do reference the Utah law on mobile home park or mobile home communities, um, quite a bit. So, with that being said, we have a few changes. Um, one of them in the community is we've taken out a couple of homes and added more storage space for parking.
Do you want me to put something up on the screen? I saw there was an email just a minute ago, is, and, and, but there was something that came in earlier today and I had Kelly forward that. Do you want me to put something up on everybody's screen?
Sure.
While you're talking?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
What would you like to me to put up?
Let's do the plot map, what I emailed you recently, 'cause I just barely got that from the engineer. And then if you guys would like, we can go through the CCNRs and whatnot. We've, uh, we spent a lot of time in the last two weeks designing the, very, very particular to this unique subdivision that we're doing. And, uh, so you can see right in the middle of the island right there. Uh, right in, yep, so between units thirty-two and thirty-one. Yep, right there. We've removed a home, added a bunch more storage space. Um, and just so you guys know, in our CCNRs, we have restricted parking, that you cannot park in your guys' in the neighbor lot whatsoever. Um, I know that was one of the things that was, for some reason, presented at last time we were here, but that we've gone completely away from that and we would never allow somebody to park in somebody else's parking lot. Especially because if you did that, you'd be parking right next to a master bedroom window. And that wouldn't be feasible or, or functional whatsoever. So, in the CCNRs, it does restrict to, um, two parking per, per home. And there's an option that the buyers can add upfront for a third, or an extra deep lot that they can have, um, longer parking essentially in. And, uh, we've also removed a few restrictions on the size of the homes that are gonna be going and approved in there. Um, we're doing twenty-one hundred square foot is the max, because that's what my model home, um, across the street's gonna be. And, just so you guys know, the model home, I've been working with Fleetwood for two years or so now. And the rep that I use in Boise, um, he goes through, he went through, I asked him to go through every model home that they have dealerships with. And out of more than fifty model homes, he said, "Hey, your model home is by far the best that we've seen go on a model. It is gonna be the best manufactured home dealership, model home, that I've ever seen across America." And I'm very humbled and grateful for that. So we're doing this completely right, and that model home will be here by the end of the month. So I'm extremely excited about this moving forward. Um, let's see, what else do we have? Mention something. Oh, and then, yep, up top on the, um, five acre piece that we just purchased, we've got a bunch more, uh, units gonna be stored for parking. Um, and, yep, and then there's an easement access to Lamont's land, right there, just to the, uh, east side, I believe, northeast side. And, yeah, we think, we feel like the, oh, and Dan, do you mind pulling up the picture of the rolled curbs? The community picture that I sent ya?
You know, I'm just noticing that, um, I have, so I'm, we upgraded to .gov emails and I just barely pulled up my, um, old .org email and I noticed there was two things that came in yesterday on the .org. So I'm wondering if maybe you sent something there and that's why I hadn't seen it. So, from what I got today, on, is that what you're talking about?
No, what about the, yep.
Oh, is the screenshot?
Yep, so that way we can demonstrate.
Yeah, I have that screenshot, yep.
Perfect. That'll give you a good feel. I'm not sure if you've all seen that or not. I know I sent them in, on short notice, but again, we're trying to prepare as best as we could for this.
Yep, no, I'll, I'll pull that up.
Sweet. That'll give you a good demonstration on the length of the roads, or width of the roads, and what each lot will look like, comparison to each other, side by side.
These, um, storage units just have, are they basically parking spots or are they actually like an enclosed kind of?
So there's both.
Okay.
There's, there's additional parking and then there's some storage units in the middle that if they...
Residence only.
Yeah.
Right.
Just for overflow storage.
Yep. That way, if they did want to have an option of using that for their storage space, they can, or do a little tough shed next to their house, that's totally fine with us as well. We're not trying by any means to take away any, uh, business from anybody else here. We just thought that it would be essential for us, for the community, to have some sort of lawn mower storage or whatnot.
Right.
Yep, so this is essentially exactly how it's gonna look. Um, rolled curbs with gutter, actually, I don't see any gutters in there, but we're doing gutters and that's the sidewalk that we'll be doing as well. And it will be all asphalt, the homes will be extremely gorgeous. We're gonna be setting a standard of new homes, um, has to be a new home in order to move into the community. And has to match all the standards that we are setting. We have, I believe, sixteen exterior colors that we can add. Um, and the nice thing about this is, is when we sell a home, we designate a lot. So the buyer gets to come in and select their floor plan and say, "This is our landscaping options." And if you guys would like zero scape, we have that option. If not, here's our two other options. And then we install everything upfront. So we do the foundation, the, um, curb gutter, sidewalk, obviously, and landscaping before the home gets placed. Or as soon as the home gets placed, we do landscaping before the C of O can be issued. And each one of these homes will be designated upon the time of installing them. Which is really nice for us going forward, so that we can do, um, phases, or however it would work to be the best and most functional for customizing every single one of the lots and making them uniquely different, but within the same parameters of, of options that we have. And we essentially want it to look just like that. Um, we have asphalt...
I, I have a question real fast.
Yep.
It looks beautiful. Um, one of my questions is, you said they're movable.
Mm-hmm.
So when I'm looking at this picture, it looks like they're pretty stationary.
Yep. Thank you, I, great question. So these homes are manufactured, um, they were mobile homes at one time. When they got put on the lot and then they tied into the foundation, what happens is, the tongue is removed. So the home sits on the foundation, then it gets lifted up. The tongues are removed, the tires and axles are removed, so that it can sit down. Um, and then there's, there's a course of block that go underneath it, or jacks. Um, and what those do is allow it to sit up just a tiny bit, but not much, so that it, there's still a little crawl space underneath it. And then it's tied down on anchor points. And what that allows is for us to consider a permanent foundation. And USDA home loans are being, um, looked at, at being approved for this type of community. I sat down with the bank down in St. George today and explained everything to them. Two weeks ago, I explained everything to them and I said, "Hey, look, I think it's very valuable if we can do a USDA zero percent down payment program for this community." And this morning, we sat down again and he said, "Look, we're doing a portfolio for this entire community up there. And we love the idea of you guys being able to sell a home at zero percent down and have the buyers move into it." So we are creating, uh, a portfolio loan for a hundred percent financing for these homes. So that's extremely exciting for me, exciting for me and for anybody involved. It, one of my concrete workers right here, flawless work, by, by the way, if you ever need any concrete, give him a call. But he lives with his family right now, and when I told him about this situation that we were doing, he was thrilled. And he's one of many. This morning, I was out on my dealership lot, it's just dirt, the, literally just dirt right now and a little bit of concrete. And, uh, a lady followed me in and she said, "Hey, are you the contractor?" I said, "No, I own the dirt, what's going on?" She said, "I am looking right now at buying a sixty thousand dollar lot, gotta pay ten to fifteen thousand in water, um, and then I gotta do my own utilities, my own foundation." And I, she said, "I'm only approved for a hundred and sixty thousand and that's gonna be like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty, or thirty thousand. What do I do?" I said, "Well, let me just explain to you what we're doing right across the street here, this might work for ya." And she just wants a double-wide, two bedrooms, two baths. Um, and she's a, a church, uh, lady that has a bunch of Bible study, ministry, yep. And, um, she, she told me I was sent from Jesus. "You're heaven sent, I can't believe that you're telling me I can actually buy a home for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars." Said, "Well, what, Tracy, one of the questions you asked me last time was what are the prices of these homes? Like I said, we re-engineered everything, so the price of the homes are between a hundred and thirty thousand, 'cause we have different floor plans, options now. And the most expensive is two hundred and fifty thousand, which is gonna be the model home, fully dressed. If we just picked mine up and moved it over, that's what we'd be selling it for." Um, and again, this is a twenty-one hundred, almost twenty-one hundred square feet home that when I, I promise you guys, when you guys walk into this, you will never feel like you're gonna manufacture a home whatsoever. This will be done as best as it possibly can. So, um, yep, that, uh, that makes me excited for people that are in the community of Parawan to be able to figure out how to move out of their parents' house. Figure out how to still be with the family, 'cause they're gonna potentially buy two or three homes right next door to each other. They're all affordable and maybe one day eventually, if he ever wants to, he can move the home out. But we don't want him to, obviously, we would, she doesn't want him to, I want him to. Um, so, yeah, we've done lots of big changes, lots of big improvements in the last two weeks. And I feel like there's a lot of, lot of team members that are joining our team right now that helped us get to this point. And it, I believe that with everything that we've changed, that this would be one of the most unique, amazing communities out there, um, by far and most affordable for homeowners that are gonna be first-time home buyers, moving out of their parents' house with some kids. Um, anybody who wants to be elderly and retired, a mother-in-law and father-in-law are gonna be moving into the community. And I have a big list of people that are waiting for this to be able to take off. And it's just simply because we're selling sub-two thousand dollar mortgage payments. And I'm a real estate agent as well, I've sold over a hundred and fifty homes in the last eight years. My average mortgage payment for my buyers right now is over three thousand dollars. I just sold a townhome not too long ago in, in, um, Spanish Fork, Utah, five hundred and five thousand dollars. Twenty-nine-year-old couple, single, single income with four kids.
No.
And I can't fathom doing that to people. I literally begged two of my buyers not to do what they were doing, but what am I supposed to do? If they don't do it with me, they're gonna go and do it with somebody else. And I've even, I've talked to those buyers about moving down here and pitched them on the process and this is what it entails. And their home is listed for sale, they can't pay over three thousand dollars a month for a mortgage payment anymore. And I also have five kids, so thinking about my kids growing up and living with me forever, I'm like, "No, thanks." But what do we do? 'Cause again, mortgage payments are mortgage payments and unless something like this comes into existence, then D.R. Horton and all the other builders are gonna be making ten billion dollars a year, like they have, instead of doing it something like this where the investor gets a long-term return instead of all upfront. So I think there's a big difference between what we're trying to do and what D.R. Horton has been doing for many years now. And that's why they're as large as they are in America. So...
I'm just, I'm just wondering if, um, I don't wanna interrupt you, if you have more, more to say. Um, there was a few, um, issues that the Planning Commission was, was kinda focusing on, and I know you've done some thinking on that. Um, issues like the, um, the finance, or the, the cost after the, the initial five-year period is up. And I know you, you did some looking at that. Maybe if you could ta-talk to us about what the CCNRs do that, um, weren't there before. There was some concern about how it could stay nice and there was kind of a different thinking. Um, rather than, um, through zoning and things, um, you guys would do it through ownership control and, and, and when I, when we were kind of referring to that, um, I know you've done some work on that as well, maybe you could address some of those issues?
Yep.
And, and then lastly, there's an ownership discussion, I think, that we need to have as well, there were some concerns there. Jamie wrote a letter, I can, I, I figured we could read that, I don't have to, but somebody could. Anyways, maybe if you could talk about that?
Yep, absolutely. So, um, one of the big things is, is what was brought up last time, is if there's a lien holder in place, what happens if the property is vacated, um, or abandoned? And at that time, we didn't necessarily know what the Utah law, um, states, Utah Code, Chapter sixteen, Mobile Home Park Residency Act. It states in here that if there is a lien in place and the home's abandoned, for whatever reason, the lender has forty-five days to come out and either take that home off of our land, um, and then we can place a new one down or whatnot. Or if the forty-five days comes up and they don't do that, then we get our people, our contractors, come in and split the home apart and take it and put it on storage, to which we then sell the home, the lender recoups their money, we recoup the, the ten thousand to twelve thousand it would cost for us to rip it or unmarried together, lift it up, put the tires and axles and wheels back on, and the tongue, and then haul, uh, haul it over to a storage lot. Um, and if that's the case, then we get our ten to twelve thousand back and then the buyer gets what is essentially theirs, or the owner gets essentially what's theirs when they, when we end up selling it. Um, and with that one, I feel like that was a huge concern addressed, just knowing the answers to that. Um, the park rent or community rent, uh, we have restricted it to three percent annual increase. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have seen that, but it's definitely in the lease agreements. Um, the, at the time of the five-year term comes up, we cannot raise rents more than three percent, or year after year, going forward on that. And that, I believe, addresses a huge concern on any of the potential rent increases being too high or whatnot.
What, what would the rents be?
Um, five hundred, or if, eventually, we're gonna look at the, um, surrounding communities and price compare. But I'm, I'm imagining that it's gonna be right at five hundred. So, and again, this is a six-point-five million dollar project that somebody has to make money on eventually. So, I'm, I hope it's okay if we do it in twenty-five to thirty-five years versus making all of our money upfront, 'cause that, it sounds like is the alternative route here, being a D.R. Horton and building these things. Um, what else? What, you had one more, Dan, in there?
Um, there was the, the rent, PCCRs, um, control, keep, keeping things nice.
Yep, okay.
Anything you've changed there?
Yep, so landscaping, that was a big question that we had last time we were here. So, I and my mom and a bunch of other people that work with us, we thought, "How do we get the best landscaping in there?" And we thought to ourselves, well, I thought to myself, "If I'm like my mother-in-law, who I've known for fifteen years, there's no way she's moving into this community without being able to go out and cut some of her own shrubs or plant her own flowers, make her yard look great." I feel like that's part of homeownership, is being able to go and maintain your own land. So, we did add the recourse of, you get one strike of maintaining your own land, and at strike two, we force an option on you of landscaping. So we take care of your landscaping, we incre-increase and include it in your rent. Um, and then on strike three, if they're not allowing, if they come out with, you know, any, any reasons why they...
Hosts?
Yes, exactly, spraying our lawn mowers off, then obviously we have the recourse of eviction after that point. So, we know that this is going to be a community that, when somebody drives through, it's going to be pristine. And that's one of the biggest ways and reasons that we're gonna be able to restrict that and manage it going forward. So, all right. Hope, hopefully that answers some of the questions. What other, what other concerns do we address in the CCNRs? What other questions you guys have?
What was, you had said before the, that this would be mortgages under a thousand, you said, or under, you said a number?
Sub, sub-two thousand.
Sub-two thousand, okay.
Yep. Even the biggest home out there is going to be right around two thousand. But all of our average mortgage payments will be well under two thousand, including the lot rent and everything.
Including the lot rent?
Including, yep, including lot rent and everything. So, again, that's, it's really hard to do in, in the day and age that we live in right now, which is unfortunate. But the reason being is because, like I said, builders like D.R. Horton make all their money upfront, instead of a long-term business plan that's better for the buyers and better for homeowners in the community as well. So, great question.
I remember now the question that I had asked last time was, if the homeowner decides to sell and they're under the lease with you, with the lease agreement, um, and you said you're the one who approves for the new owner to be able to buy it, in, in a sense, like if they're gonna keep the unit there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then, um, so the question was, I mean, is that gonna be in your lease or is that when, when they, when they purchase it?
Yep.
They know what...
Yep, so we have a very strict process that happens within the lease and the CCNRs, and it's also the Utah Code, the Utah law, that, um, the homeowner or the landlord, landlord can do a background check and a criminal history check. And if those two are passed, then there's no reason why we don't allow the sale to happen. Um, unless it's mutually agreed upon that they don't want to keep the home in the community, they can buy it and essentially move it out as soon as they close on it. Um, but to create the process going forward, say Heather wanted to sell her home, and she called me, Real Estate Agent Brody, I'd go in there and put my sign in the yard and sell it just traditionally, let the landlord know, um, at the time that we're listing it, "Hey, I'm selling my home, um, we're gonna have a, a process or a, an application come through for the new homeowners as soon as we go into contract." And at that time, we'll do the background check and the criminal history, just to make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So, does that answer your question? It, and you can sell, or you can buy the home and then you just enter into a new lease at that time, five-year lease. And we cannot, um, we cannot charge anybody more than what we're charging the current tenants. Yep, so. But traditional, conveyed to the new buyer, buyer moves in and they're happy. So, yep, great question.
Yeah, that was my question of, like, if it happens before the five years and then there's a transfer going on, how, how does that impact them? But it sounds like you're gonna approve one way or the other.
Yep, and the, at the time that the, the conveyance of the title goes to the new, um, buyers, it essentially, so we don't mind them selling even three years into their lease and just, when the new buyer takes over, they restart the five-year, the seller of the property is free and clear, they're moved already. You know what I mean? So, it's a very smooth process. We don't want any hiccups and, and mutual agreements are, are there made between the buyer and the seller. And we're kinda just like, "Hey, who's our new tenant?" Basically, or Jody's like, "Hey, who's our new tenant?", essentially, so. Yep, but we don't want anybody, or we don't wanna lapse in time by any means, so it's just, if the seller moves out on April fifteenth and the buyer moves in on April fifteenth, then just boom, transfers right over. Yep. Great question, thank you for your question too. Listen, I know you got something for me, I know you got a question.
What are you charging for your storage units?
Oh. I'm not sure, actually, probably ten bucks a month or something.
Sure you gotta undercut us too, huh?
No, 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 we wouldn't wanna do that. This is just for, like I said, the residence for lawn mowers and stuff like that, nothing big. But obviously, you're right next door, so, I mean, we have RV parking that we, we don't allow in there, other than the selected few in the back. I'm sure they're gonna be calling you and getting your, your rates and whatnot over there. And obviously, people are gonna be living right there and if they can see their property or their trailers and whatnot, I mean, that's a huge benefit for them.
In this middle part right here, did you, this is parking, right?
Yep.
Additional parking?
Correct. Yep, asphalt parking. Since the last time we were here, I believe we took out... So six total, six total homes out and added parking for all of it.
Scott, do you wanna weigh in on the ownership thing? Uh, Scott's been looking into this and, and has some input on, on the ownership. That, that vague, not vague, but the, uh, with the mobile home planned unit development. The, just to remind everybody, especially those on the Planning Commission that weren't here for the last one, um, manufactured home is treated like a conventional home once it's been, um, set on a foundation and there's the, the affidavit of a fixture, I probably called it the wrong thing, and that gets recorded with the recorder. Um, and in this case, that wasn't gonna happen. Um, and so that, by our own definition, then it, then it couldn't be a standard planned unit development, has to be a mobile home planned unit development. Even, we know that these are gonna be, they're gonna act, walk, talk like a, like a manufactured home. It has to be in the, the mobile home planned unit development, unless we were to update our code and change that. So that's why we got into that space. The only thing weird about that space is, in mobile home planned unit development, it says, an ownership re, it didn't say ownership required it. When, it says it gives you the opp, gives people, the purpose of this chapter is to give people the opportunity to own their home. And so that was that conflict and, and our attorney looked into that a little bit. Maybe you wanna weigh in on that, Scott?
Yeah, um, and these are good people. And when I, I very seldom have to render a legal opinion, because Dan knows more than I do, as do the members of the, uh, committee. But when I'm asked to render a legal opinion, and I'll preface it with this, uh, it's not always happy. Um, I charged my brother with DUI once, 'cause I didn't have a conflict attorney and my mom didn't speak to me for three years. But it was my job. And, and so I've looked at all of the codes and all of the ordinances and I've listened carefully. I don't think it fits as a mobile home park, I don't think it fits as a trailer park. I think it fits squarely under a mobile home planned unit development. And I think what, the work you've done is laudable. I mean, it's beautiful, it's awesome. But the current code that we have and the language we have is what it is and there's no way to... And there's no way to change it, you just have to read it. And it's fairly clear when it says, under the requirements up forth above in a planned unit development, applicant can apply, city council, um, mobile home planned unit development. But it said, said, mobile home development shall, it's not oftentimes in a lot it'll say may, but it says shall involve the subdivision or tract of land for purposes of selling mobile home sites to mobile homeowners and users. And then it says the city can, and through the planning and zoning commission and the city council impose other requirements in the ordinance. Then the, the kicker at the bottom, if that, if the shall wasn't clear, it says the purpose of the ordinance is to allow mobile homeowners the opportunity to own the land upon which their mobile home is parked, as well as to enjoy the benefits of ownership of common areas, recreational facilities and other amenities of a planned unit development. I don't think we'd be having these discussions or trying to contort in ways to help if you came in and said, this is our planned unit development, we're gonna sell these sites for fifty thousand each. We're gonna sell the, you know, they look beautiful.
Thank you.
Better than where I live, um, and, and this is our presentation. I think you'd have a lot of nodding heads up here because as with the, the woman you spoke about, which is moving, there's a need for it, obviously. People are priced out of the market, everybody's trying to find ways, whether internal or external, whatever that months-long, uh, discussion we had to amend our code pursuant to state law to allow people to have internal dwelling units and external dwelling. Everybody's trying to figure out ways to put people, you know, in, in housing. And this is one of them and it has every, um, positive aspect of I, I think a community wants. But as, um, the city manager stated, either gonna, we're either gonna have to comport with the ordinance as written, meaning sell the land underneath pursuant to a real estate, you know, contract and agent and they buy the land and then you put the mobile home on it and you can sell them. Uh, or we're gonna have to change the ordinance to allow for this type of use in Parle-Win City. And, and it's obvious that other communities have adapted and have a way of making this happen. But this went into effect in, uh, two thousand and what, six? And then on January ninth of twenty twenty-five, does that sound right?
No.
I'm looking at the bottom.
Yeah, that's, that's possible, yeah.
Oh, that's probably the entire section.
Yeah, we, we amended the, the whole subdivision code, but that part didn't get changed.
That was, uh, June first of twenty sixteen when, uh, that went into place. So, I don't know, I, I, I think the only path forward is, is the planning commission can make a recommendation of yes, favorable to the city council, no, not favorable to the city council. I think you can, can they take no action and recommend that it go to the city council?
I think so, yeah, if we had like a, a tie vote, that's what would happen. Um, and, and Scott and I talked just a minute before we started, um, the, of course, the other option would be if we wanted to go back and look at amending our code to, to take that out or change that, if this was something that we wanted to pursue. The only problem with that is, is we're, we're going through the process of changing our code, which will drastically affect our planned unit. So, there's no point even considering changing it for this and then we're gonna change it anyways. So, the, the idea would be, I guess, if, if we send it to city council, positive or negative, let the city council grapple with whether they wanna, um, allow a variance to the code for the project, rather than go through a whole circus thing. Um, that was just kind of what Scott and I talked about for just a second on a sidebar before we started because it is a conflict with our current code.
I was gonna say conditional use permit, but-
Well, and conditional use permit wouldn't get you around the code unless it is, cause sometimes there is a way to, it'll say, this can be done with a conditional use permit. But you wouldn't do a conditional use permit to just blatantly take something that's black and white and change it. You would just amend the code if, if that was the desire.
Sweet, that's-
So, anyways, so that's just a, a discussion on the ownership. And if I can just, I guess, that was Jamie, our planning commission chair's main, um, concern. She actually wrote a quick letter, um, of her summary. Maybe if I could just read a couple of paragraphs, cause I know that that was her thoughts. She said, um, in my response to agenda item number four, which is this, thank you for your proposal to develop a mobile home park in our community. We appreciate your interest in contributing to affordable housing solutions in our area. There's no doubt that the park would look beautiful and be maintained after looking at the pictures and floor plans you provided. However, the, after careful consideration, extensive input from local residents, significant concerns have been raised. Regarding the proj- the proposed project's compatibility with the rural character and heritage of our town, our community highly values its rural identity, spacious landscapes, low-density housing arrangements. Residents have expressed apprehension specifically regarding the density of homes proposed for this project, feeling that it would significantly alter the area's current environment. Additionally, we have evaluated the financial implications that you've outlined. Sorry, I haven't read this before, I just knew that that was her main concern. While affordability a- aspect is commendable, residents and local officials have noted that homeownership opportunities may be enhanced significantly if prospective homeowners were afforded the ability to own both their homes and the land beneath them. Ownership in this matter often leads to greater stability and long-term community investment. Given these considerations, I would ask you to revisit your proposal with these concerns in mind. I would welcome further dialogue aimed at exploring alternative solutions or adjustments that better align with the values and aspirations of our community. So, that was Jamie's, um, thoughts and comments as well.
Yep, so I got a couple of things to say about that. Um, again, licensed real estate agent as well, I've done a lot of home, um, purchases with buyers who buy condos and who buy townhomes. And they don't own anything other than airspace whatsoever. You walk into the door, that's not your door, it's the HOAs. You walk in to literally anything, they don't own anything besides the air. And they're selling for five hundred and five thousand and why? Because they can, essentially. What I don't want us to do is go and fork over the buyer's money to, if we do this and sell the land, we're, we're charging another two hundred thousand dollars because we can and we have to. This is a six million plus dollar project and there is going to be a lot of money that comes out of pockets that are going to be recouped from long-term, again, versus being D R Horton that comes in and sends a full subdivision in, in four months, you know what I mean? Builds the whole thing out and sells them for two hundred thousand dollars more than what, what they could. Not to mention, we have eighty-four units.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-four units. Our densities are three. We can go up to a hundred and thirty-five units, a hundred and thirty-five parcels if we parcel them all off. We would be doing a huge disservice to you guys by doing that compared to what she's saying this being the alternative route. And, I mean, essentially, insurance is insurance, but this, for owning the home itself, insurance is significantly less money than owning a home that's on a foundation, that's, that they own. And they have to pay for the foundation costs, utility costs, everything that's underneath the home, they're paying for. Um, if they go that route, not to mention our land is going to be worth so much more for each parcel. And you can do USDA loans on both, so why wouldn't you wanna keep it as cheap as possible? Because in the long run, two hundred thousand dollars is a ton of money when you times them by a hundred and thirty-five lots versus just doing the long-term route and helping all of the buyers out. And what she said, I don't believe whatsoever, there's people in this community that need this. There are a ton of people in this community that are ready for it and excited for it. I've been standing out there as a licensed real estate agent and owning a dealership that's not even prepared yet and people are following me onto the lot. Toby was there and I don't know how many times he gave me the buyer's number that just came by and asked him, how can I get, you know, a hold of the owner of this? So, I, I firmly disagree with what she has to say. And condos and townhomes, again, you don't own anything. In this way, you actually own your home and if you want to or need to later on, you can move it out. And it's essentially just pulling out your trailer, you know what I mean? Pulling your camper out on a, on a double A. Yep, yep. This is Ken Armstrong, my father-in-law, who has an outstanding background.
Well, he might not say that in sixty seconds from now. Uh, because I'm, I'm going to disagree with Pastor Greta that said he came from Jesus as his father-in-law. Um, he's still having to prove to me whether he came-
I'm glad I brought up my brother's DUI. I might have to step out of here.
I think, I think there's a very important point here in terms of, it is high-density housing in many respects, right? And, and with that, you're trying to balance this principle and foundation of, of property ownership and rights with property ownership, with responsibility to your neighbor. When you're living so close, you actually have some increased responsibilities. You impact each other's lives in a disproportional manner. The ability to maintain the environment, the cleanliness. We have to have the rental structure, cause that's what allows you to deal with someone who is in disrepair, who is not taking care of the property and is then impacting all of the neighbors. If you've sold the lot and they have that right of ownership, the community has lost that ability to really enforce itself for its upkeep. And so that puts all the neighbors at risk. Whereas the lease structure actually provides the opportunity to protect all the neighbors. And don't wanna lose sight of that in a lease versus ownership. That's one of the differences that is very attractive to many people. So, I just, I just wanted to give that thought.
And he came up with that thought when we were driving around your guys' town and just a couple doors down, there's a junkyard in the front of somebody's home and-
We have a couple in the historic district too.
Really? Yep, see, if that was the case, you leave something out on your front lawn for more than twenty-four hours and you're getting a note from the property manager saying, hey, clean that up or you get a fine, clean that up or you get booted. And that is one of the biggest reasons, not to mention the affordability for these homes.
Well, I would like to add one more thing though. Your C C N Rs are gonna be governing that as well, right? So, I mean, I don't know so much if I see the lease part of it as compared to the C C N Rs and how those restrictive covenants will also have the same impact.
Yep, um, Tracy, did, did we get you the C C N Rs and the, the lease agreement yesterday?
Yeah, they, they got forwarded to the, to the group.
But I was gonna say, you know, I have a development here as well. And our C C N Rs is, we don't have an HOA, but we do have C C N Rs. There's been a couple of times that neighbors have been called because they weren't following the C C N Rs and you can take legal action against that. So, I just wanted that to be clear that C C N Rs actually do have good teeth, you know, as well as you were discussing the leasing part of it.
Thank you, thank you very much. That definitely helps and makes a lot of sense.
You obviously have a great background and I know your mom does as well. Tell me how you think we get around this code or how do we? If the code specifically says in a planned unit development for mobile homes, you gotta shall own the land.
Shall, shall own the land. Um, well, I don't know, I, this is where I would ask you guys, cause you guys are the experts here. Uh, this is my first go at this type of stuff. We've done existing, but, um, to answer your question, what, what would be the steps? I guess to getting a positive, negative or no recommendation?
Well, let me ask this first, is there any way that, that, that your business model works that you could provide a path to ownership? It totally turns the business model on its head. So, I guess the question is for the planning commission is, this is obviously a different concept than, than we're used to. Um, and, and I was speaking to somebody earlier today and I said, this is a new concept. And, and they turned and said, no, actually, this is a concept that's been around for a long time. But it is, it's kind of a new concept for us, um, something that would, that would normally look like a subdivision where you own the lot and you put on a, a mobile home, which turns into a conventional home by virtue of the fact that it's being fixed. So, I guess we're probably at a point where unless there's any other questions about the design, I'm, my thought is, is probably the best route forward would be, everybody think it through, figure out, vote your mind, let's send a positive or a negative recommendation to the city council. Because really, the only way that this thing moves forward, unless these guys can go, go back to the drawing board and make this work, which they're telling us they can't, is see if the city council wants to make a variance on that code. Cause there's, cause if we weren't in the process of about ready to change that anyways, I'd say, do we wanna consider that? But that doesn't make any sense when we're gonna consider it anyways, when we're gonna be changing it anyways and not even allow planned unit development. So, that's kind of my thought is how do we get somewhere tonight? Unless there's more details that are, that are relevant that could come out, then by all means, let's ask those questions.
Can I give a little bit of two cents? Um, I, I know I've said this before, my, my degree from the University of Utah is in environment and behavior and that is the social aspect of design on how you can create community or discourage, um, people gathering. And it's looking at various housing options. And that is where my initial, um, passion for housing, and affordable housing came from. Well, just housing in general. Affordability happened when I tried to buy a house. Now, I know one of the things that Tracy pointed out is the C C N Rs and how that can regulate. But I can't afford to live in Tracy's development because of the minimum square footage requirements, the land cost and the various things. Um, part of, one of the aspects of this design that I really like is that you don't have a garage that you pull into and go from your garage into the home. You never see your neighbors when you do that. This is, you are out and about, eyes are on your neighbors, you don't see somebody for a while, you check on them.
Mm-hmm, very good point.
This, I think, solves a lot of, not all the problems, but some. And unless somebody can come up with another idea, I think it would be a mistake for us to not give a positive recommendation to city council to look at this. Not only the amount of work that you guys have put in, in, oh, for over a year. And I would love to question, I don't need the answer, but how is it that after a year of these people working with our city, that we get the, uh-oh, you, the people aren't gonna own the land? I don't know if that's on your part, I don't know if that's on our city's part, but that's unfortunate.
Couldn't agree more.
And I think you have bent over backwards to answer all of our concerns.
Thank you.
And I think it would be a benefit to our town.
Thank you, I agree with you as well.
So, unless anybody else has any other questions, if somebody wants to, um, I can tell you basically, if I understand correctly, the wording would be either a positive or negative recommendation to city coun- council to create a variance or to-
No, I'd just say to, um, approve the, um, the HOA, uh, the P U D as presented. And then let the city council work through if they wanna have other changes or alternatives or, or approve it with a variance or deny it and let them come back or something like that. I would just keep it simple.
Wait, before you do that Heather, just a quick-
I, oh, I can't do it, that's why I was trying to help, cause I'm normally the one who makes the motions. So, I was trying to like help by laying it out there so somebody else could do it. But go ahead Tracy, what were you gonna say?
No, I, I was just gonna say, I really think that it really boils down to just, we're talking about the code and, and how either it needs to be changed or not depending on your, you know, proposal, right? And so, and, I mean, the planning and zoning commission, commission can recommend to the city council, but in the end, the city council is the one that is going to approve. And so, Dan, my question to you over there is that you're seeing that this is changing the code at this point, that something else is coming along that needs to be changed as well?
Well, we're looking at rural done right.
Rural done right wouldn't have a, wouldn't have planned unit developments. And so, my point is that there's no point us stopping, going through all of the public noticing and public hearings to consider a zone change because we're gonna change it two meetings from now potentially anyways. There's no point going down that road for one property when the city council can literally give a variance on that. So, that's, that exercise would, would be wasted is all I'm saying. If, if ultimately, if the city council wants to- If, if ultimately, if the city council wants to, to approve a variance to its own code, they have the ability to do that. Normally, we would not recommend that because it would set some weird precedent. But where this is probably the last PUD, unless, if that changes, assuming it does, unless some future city councils decides to allow them, my point is, is we may as well send it forward, positive or negative, and let the city council iron that out. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, so basically, you're saying that if it goes positive or negative, I mean, negative, it kinda stops. But I mean, positive-
Either way, it goes to city council.
Either way, yeah.
That, that's the only outcome of this meeting is to give a positive or negative recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that helps. Yeah.
Let, let me ask one question. I've read in our code, um, mobile home subdivision. And I'm trying to figure out where that fits, but in the definition, this meets that definition.
So the difference is that a manufactured home, once it's permanently affixed, is not a mobile home. And that's straight out of our, our zoning code. If, if you look at R1, R2, R3 right now, it will say that a manufactured home, um, and I can pull it up if you'd like, once it gets affixed, yeah, let me pull it up.
But the code states, the one that we were trying to get through, um, it has to be conveyed to the deed, correct? But if it's not conveyed to the deed, then in, in writing, it sounds to me like it's still considered a mobile home, even though it is connected to the permit foundation.
So this is what I'm talking about. And this same language is in, in the different R codes. Um, you can have one single family dwelling, this is in, this is in R1, but this is, this is, well, let's pull it up, R3, same thing is there. One single family dwelling built in accordance with, um, adopted uniforms, standing cords. Okay, that's a normal house, right? Or one manufactured home which satisfies each of the following criteria. Length not exceeding four times its width, the home, the pitch of the roof, type of siding, continuous, um, foundation, yada, yada. Tongue, axles, transporting lights, removable towing apparatus are removed after placement on the lot, before occupancy. And then the most important one, the manufactured home is affixed to the lot by recording an affidavit of mobile home fixture and receipt for surrender title at the office of the Iron County Recorder. That's the step that these guys are not going to do with their business model. So at that point, it does not, it is not a manufacturing home, manufactured home that gets treated like a standard home, because we're not doing that step.
Can you-
Therefore, it's still a mobile home.
Can you scroll down in R3 there? And so, mobile home parks are permitted?
No, conditional.
As a con, right, I'm sorry, as a conditional use. So what is the rules with home, mobile home parks?
Okay, so both mobile home parks and planned unit developments. Then we could jump to planned unit developments in fourteen. And that's where we have been working in that space, but but in order for it to be planned unit development of regular homes, they're not mobile homes. It says in here that you can't have, you can't be mixing standard homes and mobile homes. You get to the bottom of our planned unit development code and they have, we have a special chapter that's called mobile home planned unit developments. So this logical train, if it doesn't become a standard home because it's been affixed to the property, it's still a mobile home. And then therefore, it goes in and talks about the planned unit development process for mobile home. And that's back to Scott's point, that he, he literally quoted, that says a subdivision-
Yeah, the opportunity.
Yada, yada, the opportunity to own the land. So that's how we get logically to this point.
Okay.
Where if we're gonna make a, if, if the city council, i- if we had time and if we weren't gonna be changing our planned unit development code anyways, we would say, okay, are we willing to consider making a recommendation to adjust our code? But there's no point in doing that for one development when we're gonna be changing it in a couple of weeks to something else anyways. So therefore, send it to city council, positive or negative or neutral, and let them decide if they wanna allow that variance to code that's about to expire. And it really boils down to where we kind of started. Do we feel, in the name of affordability, in the name of everything we're talking about, are we comfortable with this concept, um, to, to, to achieve this result that we've been discussing all this time? And I think at that point, you vote your conscience and we move on.
So if nothing else, then I just need a motion.
I just don't feel like my question was answered.
Oh, okay.
I think you skipped right over.
Let me answer it. What was your question again?
It was specific to mobile home subdivisions. So that's in our definitions for the land, chapter fifteen, or- And I, I apologize, I haven't had time to research our code to see where that fits in or what, further along with that.
Well, a mobile home subdivision, this is not, cause we're not subdividing, um-
But it says that it's either owned or leased.
Is it a mobile home park, a space designed and approved for, by the City of Parowin for occupancy of mobile homes to be under single ownership or management and meeting all requirements of the Parowin City zoning ordinance, Parowin City Mobile Home Park ordinance for mobile home parks.
Okay, individually. Is this just definitions?
This is definitions. So, and again, we have been operating under, that this is a mobile home planned unit development. And I, I mean, do we get into semantics of whether it's a difference between a mobile home park and a mobile home planned unit development? And with, as we've talked about mobile homes in, in the past, um, versus manufactured homes, it is, gets really vague and gray. We discussed this when we updated our RV code. I don't know if you remember that? And we could not find great definitions that were consistent from city to city or state code to federal, whatever. And so, I mean, I would like to resist going down this rabbit hole cause I don't think it's gonna provide any answers. But I'm just here to help. So, I don't vote on these things.
Well, I'll move to make a neutral recommendation to city council and let them look at it.
Thanks.
I second it.
Um, is that enough, sufficient?
It's a motion. It's on the board. It hasn't acted, been acted on, though. Yeah.
Well, we have a second, so I'm just asking if the, if that's sufficient enough-
You can send a neutral recommendation, yes.
How do we go about that on our side, though?
It'll go to city council. If they, if they approve the neutral recommendation, the next step is city council and then we'll have the city council weigh in.
So as long as city council approves the variance, then we've got your guys' approval, essentially?
Yeah. The, so the, in this case, normally with a conditional, um, use, the planning commission makes the final call. Um, when it comes to these specific condition uses, the planning commission just reviews it, looks at all the technical stuff, and sends a recommendation. So it'll leave this body forever unless the city council sends it back.
Gotcha.
So the, it'll go to city council, up, down, or neutral. It goes to city council and they make the final determination.
How often do people leave our, in our shoes and have a neutral from you guys?
No, I've never-
Rarely. We had a, we had a split vote on one recently. We had two for, two against, and a, and a, somebody who couldn't vote, cause they were anyways, and anyways, it happens.
Well, I would ask that we got a positive recommendation from everybody just to make us feel obviously more comfortable moving forward with this project. But understand that if it, if it's neutral, then that's fine. But positive would make us feel a lot better.
Yeah. As an administrative body, our job, we have to administer the code and the code's not given-
It's the code. It's not your subdivision.
I see, I see, I see.
I, I think it's great, actually. Um, and I think it's needed. Um, but it goes back to the code where we can just make recommendations to the city council. We, so, in the end, they're gonna be doing it anyways.
So right now, there's a motion on the floor. Obviously, somebody on the council, on the commission could ask for a friendly, um, amendment to the motion, but the motion has to be dealt with.
Um-
Or it can be defeated or voted.
Oh, I can't make motions. Um, can I poke the bear a little, Dan? Can you go back to fifteen oh four to definitions?
Well, y- yeah, yep. I've, I just, we're at, we have, the motion on the, on the board, we gotta, probably gotta deal with. But, but, but this is a clar, what, point of interest. Yes, point of interest. Heather, what do you want? What, where do you want me to go?
Throw down to eighty?
Eighty.
Or eighty, seventy-nine, seventy-eight and seventy-nine? The, that whole section right there, talking about what a mobile home is. I don't know if that's, I guess, if that helps or doesn't clarify anything, or if it's just more mud in the water.
Yeah, I, I really think it's the code. It's, it's the way the code's written with ownership. That, that to me seems to be where the challenge is.
Okay, well, I guess we had a motion for a neutral. We had a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? I oppose. I would do a positive.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, all right. So, city council after this?
We'll put it on city council agenda. Yep.
When is that?
Um, next Thursday.
Perfect. Okay. Well, I wanna appreci- tell you guys, I appreciate you guys' time today and hearing us out. And last meeting was just as good as this meeting, in my opinion, just because we got so much done in the last two weeks. So, I'm excited to see the, the mayor and the rest of the city council in just a couple of short weeks. So, um, if you guys have any questions for us, or comments, concerns, deep concerns online, or whatever, uh, reach out to me so that we can have a conversation going forward and help us get better at this. So, awesome. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
See ya. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I guess, uh, now we're gonna move on to discussions on rural done right. Um, I'm assuming Dan's already on it?
I'm on it. So, we did discuss this, um, quite a bit last week. The only thing that we didn't have, um, addressed ironically was about, um, the manufactured home piece that was one of the things that was requested to be looked at. So, um, I did, uh, let me just, and, and I don't know if you saw the email I sent out today, but, um, I recommended, um, went through, and, and, and all that we were, we had talked about doing with manufactured homes was, was saying, you can put a manufactured home anywhere where you can, which right now, you can put a manufactured home anywhere in an R1, R2, R3, an individual home. But the question was, is if you're gonna do a manufactured home subdivision, is there something that we may want to do there, right? So, um, I added these definitions, which are not currently in our definitions. And, and then also added a new chapter on manufactured home subdivisions and, and conditional uses there. So, the, the two definitions are manufactured home, a factory-built, single-family structure that is transportable in one or more sections, built on a permanent chassis and designed to be used as a dwelling when connected to required utilities. It must comply with the National Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of nineteen seventy-four and placed on a permanent foundation. That act is the big, it's also known as the HUD Act. That's, that's what ensures, um, certain qualities and, and, and construction and things to make it qualify for, um, loans, for HUD loans. And, and Brody mentioned that earlier today. And so, we, that, that's in the definition now if we do that. And then, um, manufactured home subdivision. Um, the way that, um, some cities do this is it's a hundred percent, it's exclusively manufactured homes. And I thought we could do that, or we could say eighty percent or more. I mean, I could see a subdivision saying, well, as long as I build one conventional home, it's not a manufactured home community, and I would like, or a subdivision. I thought, you know, there's probably better to have a threshold. So, clearly, this is meant to be a manufactured home, um, subdivision if there's more than eighty percent. I just picked that number out of the blue.
Why wouldn't anyone have a different home if you have eighty percent of manufactured homes? Or would they? I don't know.
Well, so think of it, like, there's a subdivision, um, near me that has primarily duplexes in the entire subdivision. There's a couple standard homes in there. And if all it takes is for you to build one conventional house and you get to scoot away from some additional constraints of manufactured home subdivision, everybody's gonna build one house and not be a manufactured home subdivision. That's why I thought, there's gotta be some sort of a threshold where the majority of the homes are manufactured homes, and then we wanna see some additional modifications to what we would allow there. So, we can come back and revisit that. I just wanted to point out those needed to be added to the definitions. I added manufactured home subdivision under the conditional uses of the R1, R2, R3, and R1A. The reason why that was necessary is because we're not messing at all with this code that we just reviewed earlier, that says you can put a single manufactured home in any R1 or R2 or R3 area. But if you're gonna build an entire subdivision of manufactured homes, it needs to go through the conditional use process. And I thought about stopping right there, but you have given the future planning commission that may be looking at one of these absolutely no guidance as to what we're actually trying to do. So, I created a new chapter, patterned after the mobile home subdivision chapter. But its primary purpose is to do with, to do what the city council asked us to do. And that was, we'll read it. So these are the different sections of the chapter. Manufactured homes, mo- manufactured home parks, and subdivisions. See, this actually helps to clarify kind of some of the things we were dealing with earlier. The purpose of this chapter is to establish standards and requirements for the development of manufactured home subdivisions in Parowin City. While individual manufactured homes placed on lots are regulated as conventional housing, subdivisions consisting of eighty percent or more manufactured homes require conditional use permit. The intent is to ensure that developments align with the rural character of the community by avoiding uniform, repetitive designs and meeting all applicable subdivision requirements. Since there's definitions usually in these chapters, I added those two, same s- definitions again. Um, and then the following language. Wow, that yellow is really annoying. Is everybody okay if I take out, take out the yellow?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I'll leave it down here, cause that's other stuff. Okay. And again, we're not talking planned unit development because we've, we've said we're not gonna do that. We've said we're gonna allow smaller lots by right in R3. But you have to build standard streets, standard other subdivision things, right? So the only point of this, we're not in the PUD realm. We're just saying, if you're gonna take a subdivision and you're gonna put all manufactured homes in it, what are we trying to do? We're just saying, if you're gonna take a subdivision and you're gonna put all manufactured homes in it, what are we trying to do? Okay, um, location and use, really, just talks of its conditional use. Approval process, um, all manufactured subdivisions must go through the standard subdivision process and must also apply for a conditional use permit following the provisions of this chapter. Standard subdivision requirements include but not, are not limited to, these are all normal things. S R C and planning commission, subdivision regulations, including road dedications, public utility easement, stormwater, um, dedication of public streets that meet city standards, private roads are not permitted, um, conformance with all fire safety. So, this is just, pretty much, it's still a standard subdivision. Then we get into, the whole point of this whole chapter is, a developer proposing a manufactured home subdivision must follow the standard subdivision application process and must also submit the following: a site plan and elevations demonstrating variation in home design and layout to avoid cookie cutter or tract home appearance. Landscaping plans that ensure the rural character of the subdivision, compliance with set, setback, lot size, and density requirements. Um, uh, development standards, um, all of, all of this is pretty much the same. We're not, we're just, most of it is just regular subdivision stuff. We do talk about manufactured homes complying with the, with that act. And again, we, we replicate that, they must have varied architectural styles, roof pitches, exterior finishes to prevent a repetitive tract home appearance.
Dan, I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the difference between a subdivision and a planned development?
So, a subdivision, they have to follow all of our regular subdivision, um, engineering standards. Um, rideaway width, sidewalk requirement, unless we waive that, um, setbacks of the homes, um, lot sizes, and everything like that. A planned unit development basically throws all of those things into the realm of negotiation where we can get smaller roads, tighter lots, throw out the setbacks, and we k- we kind of just negotiate everything. That's the only difference is planned unit developments let you really get creative in, in density and all of those things.
So, with manufactured homes, do you see where there could be a planned development, just like what we just went through with the mobile home?
One of the things that, that we had considered, and, and you weren't here last time when we went through this, is that, um, we would not allow planned unit developments in any of the zones anymore. Usually, the reason why developers wanna do a planned unit development, they come here, they look at our code, and they say, okay, what can I do for density? And we say, well, I'd have a quarter acre lot, ten thousand square feet, sorry, not quarter acre, but ten thousand square feet, for one, for a single house. If you're gonna do it, if you're in an R two, you gotta have thirteen thousand for a duplex. If you're in R three, you gotta have eleven thousand for a duplex. And then every additional unit is another thousand square feet of the lot. And then they say, what if I want more density? My standard answer is, the only way you can do that's with a planned unit development. That's our, and then almost, the next thing is, because we are in the realm of affordability and the cost of development is so expensive that the only way to get a return on the investment unless you have really high prices is to allow more density. So, essentially, what we're doing is, we're gonna allow more density by right, right out of the get-go. But we're not gonna put on the table everything else that comes in a planned unit development, narrow streets and all of that stuff. So, it's, it's a balance, it's a little bit of a shift with rural done right to say, R one looks like R one. R two, you can have slightly smaller lots, and you can have twin homes and duplexes. R three, you can have even smaller lots if they're single homes, and then bigger lots if you do triplexes, or bigger lots if you do a fourplex. But planned unit developments are kind of mostly off the table, with the exception of our cluster subdivision or the cottage courtyard subdivision. There's still planned unit development option for that. There's still planned unit development option for mixed use and commercial. If you wanna have a commercial residential mixed use, that still takes a planned unit development to work through that. And a commercial planned unit development. If you wanted to do a strip mall and have different ownership of the different units, we still have a planned unit development. But we've basically taken it out of the retail subdivision space. We've just given them the thing that they want the most, which is a little bit more density in these higher dense areas. So, all of that aside, we had, when we talked with the council, do we wanna allow manufactured homes or not? And the council was like, there's nothing wrong with manufactured homes, but man, when you slam 'em all in, boom, 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 and they look i- all identical, th- all this does right here is just says, yeah, you just gotta break it up. You just have to break up the design a little bit, so it doesn't just look like tract housing. And it's kind of back to this, is that fit in a rural, a tract housing look? So, all this does is just kind of say, yep, you can do a subdivision, and you can do it all manufactured homes if you want. You just have to kind of make sure it doesn't look like tract housing. It's kind of more a, it, it's a way to kind of work with the aesthetic a little bit. Now, I think, and by the way, if you look at what these guys do, they offer several different designs. Some of them have a front porch, some of them have, you know, they offer these different designs. And depending on how much you wanna spend, I would think that would probably fit this, what we're trying to do. Um, you know, I, my first home that we lived in when we were married was in a subdivision. It's on North Cedar Boulevard in, in Cedar City. And they were just stucco houses, cookie cutter houses, bum, 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 bum. And they go all the way down North Cedar Boulevard. I think that's what we're trying to avoid, is let's, let's, yes, have a way to have affordable. And in R three, they could have a six thousand square foot lot, but mix it up a little bit, so it doesn't look like tract housing. That's the only thing this tries to do right here.
That was helpful. Thanks.
Yep. Um, in our last conversation, um, Jamie, who's out there smiling, um, and everybody kind of collectively did a (mn) when we said twin homes can be no smaller than five hundred foot on either side. And I said, well, throw out a number. So, I, I just voluntarily moved it to seven hundred and fifty on a twin home. And on a threeplex or a, on a triplex or a fourplex, six hundred and fifty is the minimum. Apartments in a mixed use res- or commercial can still be five hundred. But I'm, again, throwing darts based on the c- commission's reaction.
My first gut feeling is, is duplexes and twin homes are actually two different things.
They are.
That I think that they would, may, may warrant their own numbers.
Do you think so?
Well, I think a duplex tends to be, uh, obviously, one owner that owns both sides.
Mm-hmm.
And so, potentially, they are, um, going to be renting out. Whereas, the twin homes are owned by two separate people that I, that I think can tend to lean more or could lean to larger.
So, you say maybe smaller on a duplex and.
Right.
Little bigger on a townhome, twin?
Right. That would just, that was just my first gut reaction when I saw that they were looped together on the same thing.
Do you have a suggestion?
Twin homes, what's the acreage on the R two?
For the twin homes, it is not less than five thousand for each side. If it's a duplex, it's just a ten thousand still. If it's a single family home in an R two, it's seventy-five. So, basically, you're getting ten thousand square footage on a twin home or a duplex. It's just that you're cutting it in half on a twin.
Right. Duplexes. So, they're both ten thousand, it's just, right? Is that what you just said? I'm sorry.
Exactly. They're both ten thousand, it's just on a twin home, you're dividing that in half, 'cause you're allowing the ownership on either side. Common wall.
And just to take the next step forward, you, in R three, everything in R one and R, no?
Everything in one and, R one and R two are approved automatically. That's what we're about.
Automatically in R three, and the lot size can go down?
The lot size can now go down to six thousand on a single family home. Same thing for R two, it's five, five, or ten. And it just says duplexes and twin homes are the same as R two. Triplex and fourplex are fifteen thousand and twenty thousand feet respectively. So, you're sticking to five thousand square feet per residential unit. On twin homes, triplexes, and fourplexes, your, um, your single family homes are six thousand. Which six thousand is, is, I mean, that's, that's the trade-off. That's, that's us giving the higher density by right, taking away the P U D, but giving the higher density by right to build more of a affordable starter home in an R three. If Cecily wants to build starter homes, she can build them. And there again, that's where we go to this, 'cause this was five hundred as well. And I said, well, and, and so I just guessed it at seven fifty, kinda trying to find that. And here, I said six fifty. By the way, when I do work at home, it says Wendy Justin, that's my wife, she has the, she has the rights to wear Microsoft Office Suite at my house.
Yeah, right. You make her do your homework.
(laughing). She'd leave me if I made her get into zoning code.
I will blame her.
(laughing).
She's awesome, too.
She is awesome. Hey, while we're thinking about that, let me jump down to the only other thing that I did since we, since we talked. Um, remember, we talked before about the, uh, commercial district and how a lot of times, there's a general commercial and a downtown commercial with the setbacks and all that stuff? Um, I, I didn't know if I loved the idea of trying to split the difference with the code and say, yeah, make, make it so that it could work in both. I wondered what it would look like if we just plain had two different commercial districts. One, a general commercial that had more standard setbacks. So, think of something out where it's general commercial, um, not downtown, where you have buildings right up to the sidewalk. But as you kinda get out into our other commercial areas, um, and, um, I, what I did is I, I put normal setbacks in those areas. Oh, I gotta get rid of that yellow. That yellow is rough. So, I put normal setbacks in that, in this area of front yard, twenty-five feet. That's what our standard setback is in every other district. Um, and, and this is except for a conditional use permit allows otherwise in the historic preservation district. That probably doesn't even need to be in there, because our historical preservation district, most of the places is the same as our historic downtown, but not all the places, when you talk about two hundred. Um, side setback, um, wait, which one are we in?
(coughing).
We're in general commercial. Okay. Side setback is zero, um, if you have a fire resistant building, um, except twenty feet where you're butting a residential zone, and twenty-five feet where adj- adjacent to a street.
(coughing).
So, what that means is, you know, if, if that empty lot down there by Biassi's wanted to build out, standard setback on the front, if it's a corner lot, standard setback on the side. But if you have buildings, they could kinda touch each other, like a strip mall, you know, without necessarily the, going through the P U D process for commercial. And then a rear yar- rear yard setback, no setback, except twenty feet where abutting a residential zone. And then, we actually, I actually introduced setbacks if you don't have fire resistant buildings. 'Cause otherwise, what would you do? If, if, if you say you can get, you can go to zero if you have a fire resistant building, well, what if they don't? We didn't really have that, and most, um, other places that I saw did. And then, again, residential use setbacks, we already talked about that. If you're just building a house, or only residential, it would look like R three. Um, except for mixed use, where you have residential and commercial. Um, so, that's really the only difference is between the general commercial and the, um, downtown commercial. Is the downtown commercial, um, it goes from a lot width of fifty-five feet down to forty feet. And this gets into the, um, mixed use residential, um, having, if you have apartments that are above five hundred square feet minimum. Um, later, when it talks about how it works, um, if you do, if you wanna have separate ownership, like, uh, like condos or something, if you wanted to treat them like separate ownership, you have to go through the P U D process. Um, front yard, zero setback permitted, period, right? Think of a, think of dry lakes, right, right out on the, on the front. Side yard, zero setback permitted, again, if fire resistant walls, adequate fire separation. I don't know, that's kind of, that's kind of, um, redundant. Get rid of that. Parking and emergency access requirements are met. I think that that's important, that you leave that in there. Um, they have to have a parking plan. Either it's in the building, or there is not enough, too much parking to overwhelm what's on the street or access to some shared parking or something like that. And again, if abutting a pr- residential zone, it goes down to a ten foot setback. I think in the downtown area, ten, ten foot setback. A lot of times, there'll be like an alleyway behind them. Ten foot is about usually what the, what that is. And, again, there's the fire resistant stuff at, um... No, because it is def- because it's defined in building code. I think they have to have additional stuff in commercial when it's a common wall. Right. Um, modifying regulations, buildings within the historic preservation overlay district must adhere to design and aesthetic standards and maintain a historic downtown character. That's obvious, because the, because the historical preservation district is gonna insist on it. But I thought it would be really good to just make sure it was in the code.
Mm.
Um, also, there's, um, this is where it talks about the mixed use dwellings. Um, and it, 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 they must remain in single ownership unless approved through the planned unit development process, and it refers to that code. Parking must be accommodated on-site or through city-approved shared parking agreements. Outdoor dining, pedestrian plazas, and similar enhancements are encouraged to support a vibrant downtown atmosphere. Again, doesn't need to be in there, but we're just trying to promote what this is. And, um, and again, just referring to that, zero lot setback must meet applicable fireproofing and safety, safety standards. So, this is basically, if we wanted to separate our commercial into general commercial and downtown commercial, um, we would need to actually go through our table of uses and decide if there's some things that fit in commercial that don't fit in downtown commercial, and vice versa. To remind you, right now, our, our general commercial, they all have, all of our not residential has this same, um, table. We would need to add a downtown commercial column and go through that. We don't need to do any of that right now. We could adopt this as is. And the main reason is, is because our zoning map wouldn't have any downtown commercial zones. It would only be through amending our zoning map that we would even create any. But I just thought, while we're working on it, if we wanted to do these, we could. Or we can leave it alone with the language that we already had up here, and then just revisit this. Okay, this was the language that we worked through. So, we could, we could do one of two things. We can, we can just adopt this, which is kind of a mashed together, um, commercial district to kind of modify those things to allow mixed use residential. And then later, we could come back and look at the commercial stuff, go through the tables, do it all at once. Or while we're amending our zoning code, we could add the downtown commercial, we just wouldn't have any uses. But it's not in our map, so we couldn't approve any anyways until we do that. So, that's just something to think about. Don't know what everybody thinks.
I'm, I think it's a good idea on the commercial.
What's that?
That I think it's a good idea. That I think it's a good idea.
To have the split or?
Have it, have them split.
I think so too.
I do too.
And I just questioned, cause I don't know if the scrolling is getting to me, but, um, it's okay, the, um, in that general commercial area section you were, it said to follow the P U D code. So we will still have P U D code, but it will be only applicable to? Commercial?
It would be applicable to cluster subdivisions, that cottage courtyard, which is a conditional use in all three of the residential zones. It would be applicable in commercial settings for both a mixed use apartments or ownership above and retail on the bottom floor. And it would be applicable in commercial developments that are just still commercial. Those three things P U Ds would still be applicable in. So they wouldn't have to go through it if they just wanted to do apartments. It would just be, it would be a, um, a permitted use.
So, I thought you were getting rid of apartments.
No, um, in a mixed use commercial setting.
Oh.
Yep.
Commercial setting, okay.
So in residential, you just couldn't put in an apartment building in an R three like you could now. But in a, but in a commercial setting, you could do them mixed use retail with apartments above it.
Well, do you want my just general?
Yeah.
Opinions on this whole thing?
Love it.
Do we want to hit specific parts, cause?
Fire away.
I'm prepared to fire away.
Anything you got.
I, so I like it, I like a lot of the adjustments. I don't love getting rid of townhomes. And I don't al- and I don't love the control of what these duplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes if it, uh, look like. Um, I feel like that's, I know it's in the spirit of rural, but I mean, that, that's killing the affordability, in my opinion. And it's making us more of a resort type town. That's, so those are the parts I don't like, everything else I like.
You Kelly. Could, um, to kind of answer in, in alongside with what Shane just said, can Kelly put up, um, a little slide presentation that I?
I'll turn it over to you, Kelly.
(laugh) I did this very quickly this afternoon. Um, cause one of the things you, that I was getting from it in the, was the fact that we were not permitting townhomes, condos. And, um, that can definitely eliminate a very crucial, um, part of your community that you really want. And so this is daybreak, it was the quickest thing I could, um, look at. And one of the, I know you guys were talking about, um, sing- things looking like single family homes. I believe this is at least three, maybe four units. These are for sale though, these are homes. Um, I don't know if you would consider that a townhome or what you would title it. But, um, one of these units, which I think is this corner unit with the little fencing around it, that is four bedrooms, four baths, three, over three thousand square feet and obviously six hundred and fifty, you know, I just put down the pricing. Um, to see other angles of this whole entire unit, um, if you scroll down. Um, you can see here garages and daybreak are all in the back with the alleys. Just to, you know, the design purpose is to promote a more walkable community. Um, and front porches so that you're out and sitting out there. But anyway, so this was one of those, cause I know that you guys are trying to steer more towards a single family look, if I'm understanding that correctly. Um, you can scroll down again. These in some people's mind, I would think would be called townhomes. But I don't know if this is something that would fit with what you're talking about. And the fact that they do look like a home, um, a single family home, but it is connected, um, in, in such a way. Um, this again, this one's only over twelve hundred square feet and still quite expensive. But it is up north, so that does, you know, contribute. Um, also, if you scroll down in this, they have, um, mixed in is even a smaller unit. So the ones on either side are twelve, over twelve hundred square feet. That middle one there is just over a thousand. Um, again, pricey, but it is what it is. Um, so I don't know if you consider that a townhome or if that would fit into what you're wanting in Parawan. If you could scroll again, again, and just another view and example of that where you've got four units, um, and there is one unit that in there is a smaller, uh, footprint. So one of the things that I would?
See, and I would think all of those would, or probably most of those would, as long as there's not more than four, would fit.
So one of?
And whether you call that a townhome or whether you call that a fourplex that tries to look like a single family, it's kind of not a huge difference, but it, but, but all of those are not boom, 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 cookie cutter townhomes.
Right. So one of the things on the last slide, um, is that, um, not that daybreak is necessarily this, but, um, something that I think as a city we might want to consider, um, or a town, whatever, um, preapproved building designs. And, um, there's a growing list of communities nationwide that are starting to adopt preapproved building plan programs to address the housing crisis. Preapproved building plans, sometimes called pattern zones. If they are used in a specific area of the city, allow a city to greatly expedite permitting for a set group of designs, which often are based on the region's particular, um, architecture. So I think that, that could be something that we would want to consider. Maybe doing that for the quote unquote less desirables or whatever you want, however you want to, um, that then we are still maintaining, um, the look and feel that you're wanting here in town. And this is a company, um, if you want to check them out, that will help. The, um, the goal of the company, Pattern Zones, is to help solve the high so- housing crisis by making high quality designs more accessible. And, um, they do that by helping towns and cities to curate preapproved portfolios. So I just wanted to mention that, um, so that if you guys, um, I understand not wanting a big apartment complex or not wanting some, you know, four story condo, I understand that. But I think that we need to, it's a very critical, um, section of the housing market. And if we can help in a way, any way to, um, I don't want to say encourage, but, um, to, um, not discourage, I guess. That was my initial concern when I was looking at the plan when you first were presenting it. I was feeling like a big section was getting cut out, so.
Well, and I, 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 I was talking to a, a developer and, and showed him kind of the outline that, that the city council had talked about. And he said, so basically I can build townhomes, they just need to not look like townhomes. And four is the limit on a parcel. And I said, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And that's kind of what I got, uh?
In an R three.
Tonight as well, and I just wanted to bring some examples of what I knew quick at hand, which is daybreak, that they have, um, various homes, um, set up in that kind of style. Homes and, I mean, again, still all, um, everything I looked at were one owner occupa- or one owner. I know what I'm trying to say, but I have like a, I've got this headache developing behind my eye, I'm so sorry. Yes, so. But anyway, that was, that was it, thank you, I just wanted to.
So the code that you were putting together, Dan, you could do something like that, right? It'd be like a fourplex or it would be a townhome.
Yeah, it'd be a fourplex with separate ownership. The separate ownership has to be created through a subdivision process.
That's not how it's written.
It could be single or e- or separate, it is written that way.
Oh, I thought I read it that on three and four, that they have to be single owner.
Nope. Let me sho- let's, let's go look at it.
Yeah, look at it, cause that's what I thought I read.
No, it's, if it, what it says is?
Of single ownership.
It says, um, all, hang on, hang on.
You just?
I know. Um, all, okay, so triplex or fourplex dwellings having separate ownership when approved through the subdivision process.
Oh, okay. And I read the sentence above that.
Yep, so they, you can do them either or.
Okay.
Single ownership as rentals, or you can do separate ownership, but it has to go through a subdivision process. How else would you create it?
Gotcha.
But yeah, I, I mean, again, with this, cause we, we have to be very careful with aesthetics. We can't say what the aesthetics look like. But we can, we can say that we're, we're trying to go after a certain design. Um, I mean, sorry, structure type. All triplex and fourplex dwellings must meet the design criteria, and you weren't here for this conversation. This is the only way, these three things are the only way that we can try to accomplish what we're trying to do. Varied roof lines require roof pitches or heights to avoid a flat boxy look. Articulated facades, the examples that you used, you saw the different facades, how they were broken up and the different kind of designs. Required wall plane offsets and separated front entries. So these just don't have one, two, three, four, you know, doors like an apartment building. That's about all that, that I could find that we can do from a structure standpoint to try to make this four home townhome be slightly less cookie cutter box, box, you know, thing.
Yeah, so going to a duplex.
Did you talk into the mic, I had people texting me saying that you weren't doing that earlier?
Um, going to a duplex, the duplex that Dave Harris just built, you could not do now.
No, you can do duplexes?
On four hundred, so they could have the same.
You can have duplexes?
You could have like, or twin home.
And now you can have twin homes also.
Twin home, so, because that, like, coming from a contractor, that's gonna be the most affordable?
Huge.
Way to build a house.
And it doesn't change our density.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it doesn't change our density, but you are, yeah.
But if you're changing roof lines, that's gonna make things more expensive.
It is gonna, and, and give us an idea, cause you know this better than anybody sitting up here. How much, I don't know, you, I don't know if you saw our, our duplex designs where it, where it looks like maybe a different, like a house, but you have the entrances slightly separate. I know it's not gonna be as cheap as if you do a perfect?
Yeah.
Mirrored thing, yeah.
But every time you're splitting.
Every time you cut it up, it changes, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna up your price.
How, how much? (laugh) Now I'm really putting, flipping it back on you.
Yeah, you're, yeah. I mean, I just had a house that was, had quite a few gables and all kinds of things. And then I bid basically the same floor plan with a very simple roof. And I think it went down five, ah, five to ten thousand dollars, took, taken off of that one home, so.
So that's what we write?
Every ti- like every time.
That's what we write in here, um.
I know we don't want everything to just look straight lined, but every time you're making?
Where did we put it?
And I've built in subdivisions where, like, I can't even, I can't go, uh, sixty feet on a same plane.
And we don't get into that level of detail.
Yeah, well, and that's what, I don't think we need to be like an H O A that sets rules for, on homeowners, I think they, you know what I mean? I think the H O A needs to take what color the house can be, what? We need to be very careful not to stay on, stay away from that.
I was trying to look for where it says it in R two. I'm scrolling, I'm getting myself scrolling dizziness. I don't know if we have anything there in R two.
I think if you limit it to four, I think you're not gonna get that same look, but maybe not so oriental, like, cause I get you don't want rows and rows of townhouses.
Well, even rows and rows of duplexes that are all identical.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want that.
If it allows my kids to live in Parawan, I don't care.
(laugh)
Like, that's, that's the truth.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at right now, and let's not dodge the seriousness of it.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I feel like this is kind of saying, no, we're gonna bring on more of the same that's, that's caused the price increase and not allow for our kids to live here forever.
There are provisions in there that have been made, some concessions to try to make it more affordable.
Cause right?
Your lot sizes, your, uh,
Lot sizes are much smaller.
Your variance on your, uh, your impact fees, your, well, having the common wall ownership. You know, all those are trying to make it more affordable. So there's concessions, you need to look at the, you, you know, not, it's not all one way.
So right now, to do it, right now, what you could do in an R two is you can do a duplex only, and you have to have thirteen thousand square feet. Under the new code, you can have a twin home on ten thousand square feet and have ownership on either side of it. So you've, you've made it more affordable, more affordable, and then you backed it off onto the affordability based on some design stuff.
And if you guys investigate, I'm not saying that you, just to look into the preapproved plans, that would also then lower the cost as well.
Agreed, and that's, this is a common thing that's being discussed, uh, that I've been going to around land use things.
There's been concessions on lot sizes. And that's big.
It's o- it, but it's okay that I disagree.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I know. But I'm just saying there are concessions because there were a standard ten thousand square feet.
And I appreciate all those.
But then you're trying to make it so, cause land is the big issue, is the big cost. And so you, there's been a lot of concessions in that area.
Um, what was I just gonna, was there something I was thinking?
So Dan, what would you like us to do now?
So we need to have a public hearing. You guys can debate and go around, around, you can change language, whatever you want to do, and it needs to go back to city council. What I tried to do was create what the city council had discussed. And I think I've done that in writing. And you guys are not the city council, they, they're asking you for your way in and buy in, and you can change it. Um, they can turn around, change it back if they want. Um, but that's, that's where we're at as of now is, other than splitting the two commercial districts, um, what we have in front of us is what we, is what the city council wanted to have discussed and have a hearing and a recommendation on.
So should we split some of this up then? Like, you, first of all, we're talking about the manufacturer homes. And did we need to do that separately, or do we do it all together?
I think we're just gonna do it all together.
Okay.
The only things, I, I guess, um, I mean, we can, we can have a public hearing and then, and then continue to discuss the little details if we want to change something, or major details if we want to change something. Um, the only thing that we didn't really, um, ever get anywhere on was, was the five hundred square feet versus six fifty or seven fifty. There was kind of some thoughts there, um, I don't know.
Um, I thought more about the twin home and the duplex, and I think the smaller the square footage, the better. That I think them being lumped together is great. Five hundred, um, I think we all agreed was a little, um, low. As much as I love five hundred square feet. Um, but I think, Um, but I think, um, seven hundred and fifty on each side is probably, unless somebody has a better number or a different number.
That's minimum, of course. They can go bigger, but?
Right, right. And that's where my brain finally was like, well?
It also allows you to have a single family home down to eight fifty, which has always been a thousand, if everybody remembers.
Mm.
I agree. I think the numbers look good.
So, with this plan, um, an, a Foothills development would never be permitted again? That's with a question mark on the end. I didn't just make a statement. There was actually meant to be a question mark on the end of that.
Yeah, Foothills is a, um, actually, Foothills was never in R one. Foothills couldn't happen in R two.
I think, yeah, it was just in R three.
It was just R three. And, um, we struck out apartments, condos, townhomes and other buildings. And then in the conditional uses, we had mobile home park.
Mm.
And it's just gone. So, Foothills wouldn't be a thing anymore. And a new Foothills wouldn't happen.
Well, I, I would personally fight for that to remain, but I don't know if anybody else. Um, Foothills is the park down by the storage units on your way, two hundred south?
On the way out of town.
On the left hand side?
Down by K V.
Yeah.
That's Foothills.
On the left when you're heading to?
Oh, when you're going out. Yeah, yeah. Well, do you want to, do you weigh with mobile home parks?
I don't know if this was a big discussion item. It was just kicked around.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I'm not against them either. That's just my opinion, though.
I guess?
You, you own the lots in there, though. They are?
You do own the lot in Foothills, yeah.
Yeah. Now, yeah, as it's, uh, originally was, but yes. Um, well, I guess, well, right now, when, I guess, when we make our recommendation to plan, I mean, I don't know.
So, let's, let's throw it, have a public hearing, and then, and after the public hearing, we can go through. And any, any consensus on stuff, we'll leave, division of opinion, we'll vote on. And, and anything you want to change, we'll change and send it up.
Okay. Unless there's more discussion, we would just need a motion, um, to set a public hearing date. And what's the next, next meeting?
The sixteenth.
April sixteenth?
I make a motion that we set a public hearing for April sixteenth to review the rural, done right zone language proposal.
Sounds good.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Sorry, Shane.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Um, so now we're at member reports.
Right.
Dave Burton, anything?
No, I just say that, okay, you've got this set for the sixteenth, so you could have that public hearing, discuss it and get it to city council the twenty fourth. And I'd say the sooner the better. I said that last time. They said Weston said it, but I said it. I said, yeah, in the minutes, I had recommended ASAP.
Why didn't you make a correction when I brought it up?
I couldn't get those miserable minutes up on my phone.
Oh, okay.
I read them somewhere. But anyway, it's important that, uh, I think this, the sooner the better. That this can't be belabored and just, with whatever. Because I think we've got a lot of things that are coming before us now. And unless we have something in place that's, that's standard, then we're going to give up a lot of opportunities.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Tracy? Shane? Um, I had two things, um, from the last city council. I guess, I was just going in order. I should have gone last, sorry. Um, was, I would appreciate if at, um, city council, when you're talking about, um, a positive or negative, um, recommendation coming from us, if you can clarify when it is not unanimous. I mean, by default, it would be unanimous, but at this last meeting, when you were talking about the, um, R V park, eh, I would have appreciated that it had been known to city council that it wasn't a unanimous vote.
Yeah, that can be done.
And then the other thing too, that I heard through that, um, was, uh, the question, I think, Dave, you, Dave, you brought it up, was the conditional use, when we permit or issue a conditional use, the person who owns that property doesn't receive a copy of it. And I think?
Oh, yeah. We, we, we are going to change that.
Yeah, that, that would be, I didn't know if that was something to discuss here.
Yeah, if we're going to issue a permit, there needs to be something on a piece of paper.
Yeah, we, I think both players need to know what the rules are. And, um, so, anyway, that was it.
We discussed that at all levels of changing that.
Cool. Then I guess we don't need to discuss it here, if it's going to happen.
Well, you probably will.
Well?
Yeah.
Not tonight, though.
Oh, I know not tonight, but you won't have it in this body, I would think, wouldn't they, Dan?
Well, and the reason why you want to do that is because ultimately, they can record it on their deed.
Right.
You have to have something to record.
Right.
And you need to know what the things are.
And then you need to know the specifications.
And we have issued some of those. It just hasn't always been a thing. Like, the R V park, it was never issued when that was done back in twenty, whenever it was, nineteen.
No, it was, uh?
Anyways, there's no piece of paper on that one. We looked. Kelly, Kelly looked hard.
It was, um? I've been here. Well, and also, I think that the conditional use permit was granted to them. And then immediately following that, R V parks were approved in highway services. It was something weird like that, that I wonder if, well, anyway. Weston, anything?
Uh, winter's finally arrived.
(laugh) I was caught thinking today, it's third, third Utah winter.
Tomorrow, we'll be staying here tomorrow.
Oh, I'm chomping at the bit, because I got somewhere to be. But next meeting, um, there's a lot of, all of the new bills that have come out that went through the legislative session. We'll give an update on some of the stuff that's in the land use space, so.
Okay. Well, then, last thing is, and you're not going to jump over?
Motion to adjourn.
(laugh) Second. All right. Tracy seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
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 Oh, man, that scrolling really got to me tonight. I'm usually not that sensitive, but man, it really got me tonight.
What? It only gets better from here, right?
It only gets better. It's still snowing? Huh? Yeah, I figured it was that way. Is it still snowing?